I need a motion to come out of the second session.
Almost.
Second. Roll call.
Linda?
Yeah.
Mike Phelps?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Mike Gobble?
Yes.
Joe Pellerina?
Hi.
We'll call tonight, you need to order, and we will send up to the front of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to their public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We just had a wonderful tour of the elementary school. And thanks to the teachers and the kids, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to be here tonight. So, thank you. Okay, moving on to tonight's consent agenda. I need a motion for approval of the meetings from last week, I mean, last month.
Almost.
Mike?
Second.
Is that Mike?
Felton and me.
Okay, Jessica. Okay.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike Phelps?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike Gobble?
Hi.
Joe Pellerina?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I need a motion again for the adoption of tonight's agenda. Someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike Phelps?
Yeah.
Jessica Sylvene?
Yes.
Mike Gobble?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to approval of the business consent items. Can I put these off together? All the items, we go together, too?
Several items. The personnel consent, none of business consent.
Business consent items include the OCS and our paper and supply bid, as well as our treasury report. I need a motion. Someone? Thanks, Mike. Second. Thanks, Jessica. Roll call.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike Phelps?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike Gobble?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Thank you. Period.
Motion carries. Moving on to our personnel consent agenda items. Need a motion?
It's a motion.
Right? Second. Again, Mike, sorry, Mike, mom?
Yep.
Thank you. Yes.
Mike Phelps?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike Gobble?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the CPSC and CSE items. So, thanks, Jessica. Second. Thank you. Roll call? Yes.
Mike Phelps?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike Gobble?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the president's report. In regards to any committee reports, do we have any committee members that would like?
Oh, just that, we're in the process of getting our NIST compliance review, and hopefully, some time in January. I hope that that will be done.
Wonderful. Okay. The legislative committee is meeting in January, and also, I wanted to remind the board that we have, we're meeting with the legislators in February, and I have the dates. The date for the February meeting is February 23rd in the morning. If anybody wants to carpool with me, let me know, and I will certainly be happy to go with you. The snow date is March 1st, and that's where we get to meet the legislators from Broom and Tiger County. And then, the second date I wanted to remind you about was that we have the Broom-Tiger-BOC School Boards Association Joint Dinner. That is March 27th at 5:45. And what's really special about that is we're going to be hosting that here in the Weegal-Apulaken. And it's a joint dinner, and we'll get to highlight some of the wonderful things that are going on in our district. So, I think that's the first time, a long time, that we've been able to do something special like that. Otherwise than that, that's all I have for the president's vice president's report. So, I'll turn that over to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Stretts. I just want to thank Mrs. Silvestri and her staff and the students for a great evening. These are my favorite, by far, my favorite meetings of the year, when we get to come to the buildings and see all the great things that kids are doing, and the leadership from the student council is just, it's refreshing. So, nice, nice job to all of them, and thank you. We have several winter and holiday concerts that are going on, I think AES tomorrow night. So, hopefully, folks can make it to that. We also have the Shrek musical, which is set to perform on February 9th, 10th, and 11th. That should be pretty exciting, up at our high school, middle school auditorium. Athletic teams this winter so far, and we're early on, but seem to be off to a pretty good start. So, we're really, really pleased with, with the progress that they're making. I want to thank the folks from Caps for Cause, who made a donation the other day to our school district in helping some of our students who might be less fortunate receive some, receive some gifts. So, it's something that our counselors and school psychologists have been working on. It's just a great partnership, and we're certainly thankful that they, they chose us this year to make a donation to. And then, I just want to recognize quickly, our STEM, the STEM engineering data, our students from OES and AES were really well represented and did a, really just did a fantastic job. So, kudos to all of them for participating in that. So, that's all I have for the moment. We have Mrs. Silvestri, who's here tonight to give us the building spotlight. Can you just talk a little bit about some goals and things that they're working on here from the building standpoint? We'll turn it over to Shay.
All right. So, I don't, I hope you can see well enough up there. But, opening day, our staff met together and developed a mission and vision together. And so, I've been part of missions and visions before, where they, we know what they are, but they're, I am making a point of honoring our mission and vision by doing staff newsletters. So, I think Marcy put in the exact folder for you to see some of the staff newsletters we do. So, we're, I'm on the lookout for who's honoring our mission and vision and trying to lead that for our students here. Go ahead. One more. So, our main goal this year, and this is really, Tom, I'm probably going to give him a copy of this for his building. Tom and I have worked really close together this year. So, our main goal this year has been to establish priority standards across, in each grade level, across buildings. So, we really want to be able to say that all students will leave their grade level with priority standards, being proficient in these priority standards. So, just an example, if we could say that every kindergarten or left kindergarten with every letter and every sound, it would make a huge change when we look upward at what students can do. So, each grade level has set these priority standards for their grade, according to the New York State Standards or Next Gen Standards. And so, these standards are these, priority standards are being put on a data dashboard so that after they're all in, we can look at them from pre-K to five to see where kids might fall apart, where our standards need to be strengthened, so, or where we can meet, meet learners. So, those are, that was our main goal between both buildings. And it kind of spills into the next goal, which talks about OES data. So, oh, you can go one more slide, sorry. We really wanted to streamline the process of how we collected data here. So, earlier this year at an award meeting, we presented the data dashboard and some NWEA data. I don't know if you remember the data dashboard, I'm happy to share it with you again. But, teachers are entering all of their data as assessments happen. And it's, it really is a game changer, because you can see by class, by student, across the district, are we struggling in a certain area, is it a pocket of kids? And then, we can act fast. So, we're not waiting until we get test results back, which just came back from April of last year. We just got them Friday. So, we don't have to wait so long to intervene on kids when we have this data or enrich kids ready at our fingertips. I also can get on and say, I might need extra help in this room or more support, which, so, it really just, it is a game changer to have that in one place. And so, where are we with data right now? And again, this is across both buildings. Each grade level has set a SMART goal. It's a goal that they can measure around a priority standard. So, they set it with current knowledge of 10-week data, and we're going to check that data at 20 weeks. So, I have an example of fourth grade. So, again, this is fourth grade across the district. So, our, an essential standard is that they know their multiplication facts for sure. If they're going to fifth grade without that in, under their belt, we're in trouble. So, and as we saw today, third grade is where it started. So, really, they're getting to fourth grade, we're in trouble. But, so, their pre-assessment was 60%, their checking was 85, and their post-assessment was 85. They have a new goal for division. Division seems to be a little bit harder, but you can see the actual goal is 100% accuracy by the end of the year. So, we're well on our way. And every grade level has developed this SMART goal, this is just one example.
Stacy, is this tool that you were talking about, that you presented last month?
Yes. Yep, that's, that's one of them. And so, our next steps, we're going to continue to make SMART goals throughout the year. Really, by each quarter is, is, I believe, is more powerful, just because we're monitoring them. It's not a goal that's just left. And we're monitoring student progress on the data dashboards. So, if we're noticing big gaps in priorities, standards, we can intervene. And then, of course, just supporting teachers and students, so.
If I recall, you said you were going to try and present some data dashboards to the board as we move through the school year, correct?
Yeah, I have, we have about 13 weeks of data now, and, and teachers have learned, so, the dashboard gets really long. Like, you're scrolling a really long way to find where to put your data. So, grade levels have started hiding tabs, which we can still look at, we're not like hiding them to hide them. They're hiding them so that they don't have to scroll over so far. But, yeah, we certainly can share that, maybe at some point.
Okay.
So, it's just.
That'd be interesting to see in another couple of months.
Yeah, absolutely. So, when.
Starting math, with the region's goal to increase math, does that influence anything that you're doing specifically?
Well, we're right now piloting some math programs. So, we're looking, our, I know the engagement work is not, not updated anymore. So, we're looking, we're piloting math programs right now. But, I think, really, going back to priority standards, those essential, are those priority skills, I guess I could say. Or, I think, a lot of times, kids are falling apart in math because the skills aren't in place. So, our goal of not letting kids go even to the middle school without having those skills in check will definitely help. Yes?
So, you're going to need some multitudinal data to do gap analysis. Is there a way to import historical data that might be consistent with what you're looking at? Is there any consistent assessment that you could incorporate, look at it over time?
For sure. We, well, we have the state test scores that we have multitudinal data on. But, also, just in the data dashboard, we have benchmarks, which are consistent throughout the year, from 10 weeks to 40. And then, the essential, so that the goal really is with priority standards, that it's not a one-and-done assessment. So, for example, in kindergarten, letter ID is checked every three weeks. Letter Z is checked every three, three weeks. So, really, once they kind of test out, that data stops, but, but that's huge, so.
Thank you.
And the kindergartners, maybe the signs that are on the table for you, from Mrs. Morris's class, the book sale. Yes.
You have it beautiful.
Their handprints and their thumbprints are the lights, so.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Also, if I, oh, there's another question? Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I know that you, you housed or hosted the craft fair last week. I was just curious as to how that went.
It was a huge turnout.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, a really large turnout.
And that, that benefited the.
Music boosters.
The music boosters, which we want to thank you for doing that. Please, make sure you thank all your staff that helped make that happen, because I know that's a lot of work.
Yes.
That was just, again, thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe Ford is another unsung hero. I know he's not here tonight, but.
But, make sure you tell him that.
Head custodian here, and he worked really hard on that. And I know you guys can't see, but behind you is the holiday shop, and there's, there was lots of setup that went into that as well.
I heard a lot of wonderful compliments, so just thank you again. Please pass it on to the people that made it happen, for the, for the vendors that were here, et cetera, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, so, 5.3 budget calendar, updated BOE calendar. So, you had the original, but then, we had some updated, a couple of updated changes. One date was updated due to the OCS.
Annual budget.
Annual budget. Yeah. Right, and then, the May meeting on the 13th had to be moved closer to the budget vote date, because we're required to be within a certain amount of days of that vote.
Okay. So, we need to.
Just information.
Just confirmation, okay.
Yeah, just info.
And you made a change in our Board of Education calendar as well for that?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
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 Yeah, so you can see in there as well, in that same section, there's the outline of the budget calendar process.
And, yeah, this is the first time our new board members have seen a budget calendar. So, are there any questions from our new board members in regards to the timeline here? Nope. Okay. Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, presentation. So, Mr. Beatty and Mrs. Silvestri were gracious enough to put together a library committee review team, which has some questions about librarians and at the elementary level. So, they reached out to different stakeholders and put a committee together, and they've been working over the past few months on determining what that looks like and kind of what the recommendation that came out of that, that committee would be. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to the two of you, and you can share with the board.
Can I ask anybody that's sitting in the back, if you're not hearing very well, we don't have any mics up here, and some of us are using our teacher voice, and so, if you want to lean down and come closer so you can hear all of us, we'd invite you to come down a little bit closer, because some of us are a little more soft-spoken than others. I'm sure Tom and Stacy will use their teacher voice, but you're welcome to come down and to be able to hear things, because they're, they're projecting this way, so.
Like bus duty voice?
But, I would encourage you to come down closer if you can, because it's difficult to hear with the acoustics. So, okay, thank you for doing this.
Yes. So, there's quite a few buttons, just so you know, on the slide. Sure, go ahead and do one suspense. So, currently, all right, that's fine. Currently, we have a library both at AES and OES, the actual space. We share a TA who manages the collection and distribution of books at this point. And teachers sign up voluntarily to bring their classes. So, the TA here, I think, in both buildings has a sign-up slot, and ours is on Google Docs, and people sign up, and then, they, they come. So, to date, just under 3,000 books have been circulated between both buildings, pre-K to five. And then, of course, we have an extensive classroom libraries in, in all of the classes, K-5, with a minimum of 19-minute ELA block. And then, we're consistently investing in these classroom libraries, so kids can access books daily. So, typically, a library schedule might be one day out of the six-day cycle. These classroom libraries, they access every single day, so.
So, we had some vigorous discussions. We had a little bit of research that we've done. We broke off into separate subcommittees and came back. We met, I think, a total of four times. And what we really discussed was, what does, what does a modern-day library look like? What, what does it entail? Is it what we grew up with? Is it more than just a book collection? And we had administration, intermediate, and primary teachers. We had a teacher assistant. We invited parents. We had the library specialists from outside the district, as well as inside the district. And we, we concluded, before Stacy gives you some recommendations, that the library really is more than just a collection of books, that there, it's a multifaceted place run by a person. It, it really, we concluded, was about the person as much as the place itself, that the person who would run a library in an elementary school has the capacity to have a huge impact on school culture. So, our emphasis is really about getting the right person. We thought that that person should be responsible for helping us update the collection, somebody who's an expert on topics of modern-day literature and things that kids would be interested in. The, the group decided that it would probably be somebody who had a particular library media specialist skills. We talked about the fluidity of the librarian and how that person could help and assist the classroom, whether they go to the classroom or the classroom comes to them, but they should be enhancing the lessons of the teacher, as well as somebody who could help grow and enhance our student success and wellness and STEAM programs. We determined that we necessarily don't need to create a new special where kids go to library for a class. Rather, we want to schedule times where, when it's conducive, teachers will bring the kids to the library. It's important to remember that we want to look at the library as part of a literacy program, not just a place. So that it should be fluid, right? It should be enhancing those classroom libraries. It should be working with the teachers in their curriculum. It should be fluid back and forth. And lastly, Stacy and I and the committee agreed that they should give her and I the latitude to look at our schedules from the building, and so that we could make sure that we're scheduling times that are best and to make this person their. we're scheduling times that are best and to make this person, if we recommend a person, what their schedule would look like and how it would be best used. So.
So, am I understanding you correctly? You are recommending...
So, that's gonna be the next slide.
Okay. Linda will fall down here. Go ahead.
So, the recommendations from the committee were to hire an elementary certified library media specialist. And the position is important, but it's really about having the right person in the position. The person would also update the OES and AES collections with more selections. And then allow, the committee agreed that they should allow Tom and I time to collaborate and schedule creatively to provide the librarian flexibility to collaborate with teachers and support literacy in each building.
And the only other thing that I overlooked was they recommended that if we so choose to have a librarian split between both buildings, that it would be a good idea to keep the TA so that if the library was at one building, the TA could be at the other building so that we have maximum access to the facility.
Makes sense. Do you mind making forwarding that presentation to the board? Do you mind?
I think we have it. It's in the email.
We did do a lot of research with different elementary schools to kind of see how they staff the library, and it was a big mix all over the place. So, some hire library media specialist, some hire TAs, some have aides in the library. So, it was a big mix of everything, but our committee was recommending to hire a certified library media specialist.
With the TA supporting the student, which makes a lot of sense.
So, when you have a new teacher, how would you train them to use? How would you differentiate or advise them to differentiate between using the library and the classroom library? What's the...
The librarian, the person themselves?
No, the classroom, so you get the classroom library. So, what would you tell them, is you want to use the library, is you want the same classroom?
Right.
One of the big things about our literacy program is trying to give students choice and independence. I guess you can only go to the library so many times, maybe once in a six-day cycle. That way, a kid gets to go, explore, journey, get help from a person to find an individual book. By investing in the classroom libraries, which we've done a significant amount of investment and have very robust classroom library sets, a student can go and get a book daily. They're never without books. They're never without high-interest books.
I guess the biggest difference, we don't, you can't possibly have 10,000 books in our classroom libraries.
Right.
So, there is a wider selection in the library. And the hopes, the library media specialist kind of follows some of our curriculum. So, for example, 4th grade does a writing unit on nonfiction leather. So, the library can support some of that with book choice and getting books that we might not have access to at kids' levels.
And where the classroom library might be more conducive to finding a kid with the right level, the library itself might offer something more specialized for a specialized interest.
Was the lady, I can't remember her name, Linda, I think you might remember the woman, probably in July or August, who made the pretty impassioned speech about having a librarian? Was she involved in...
She was representative. Yeah, she was a representative.
She just couldn't, I think she couldn't be here tonight for reasons, but...
Oh, good. Okay.
Yes, we did make sure to include her.
Yeah, I had to up, I turned my, you know, the presentation there.
You have it. Good.
So, thank you.
Any more questions?
Hope you all have a nice holiday.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so up next, we have, and this will be done via Zoom with K-12 Insight. So, a sense of conversation for a while now in taking a look at culture and climate surveys, you know, something that I think that it's a good time to do it. We haven't done it in a while. It could be a helpful tool, I think, in taking a look at culture and climate across the district and making adjustments to determine where we can improve. So, we have Jennifer from K-12 Insight, who is gonna talk, just kind of talk through what they do.
Sorry, how do you want to do it?
Hi, Jen.
Good evening. Hi, how are you doing today?
All good.
So, I have a couple things to share with you about our school climate and culture survey. However, I didn't know if you wanted to ask questions first or however your preference was, or you, why you wanted this to go.
Yeah, I think you should, I would, present would be wonderful first, an overview, and then I'd sort the board a lot of slides.
Okay. So, all right. So, the first thing we know about our school climate survey is we have certified learning book. So, we have three main rooms. One is for parents and guardians, one is for campus-based staff, and then one is for secondary students, which is grades six through 12. We then have a version that you can do for grades three through five, and we do have a version that can go for grades K through 12. The versions for parents, campus-based staff, and secondary students are considered our benchmark survey types, meaning that several districts of us, the country, do that version, or a very similar version of the survey. And so, we're able to get a national-level dataset to do a benchmark report. So, then you're able to take your district's results and compare them nationally. We also have a vertically-aligned survey, so for parents and guardians, campus-based staff, and students in grades six through 12, it's vertically-aligned. So, that means the questions that go across those three versions are all the same, so that you're able to get accurate line of perception, look across stakeholder groups and within stakeholder groups. The versions for grades three through five and K through two are simplified versions, so they're not vertically-aligned. They cover the same topics and various similar style questions, but the questions are much more simple and the answer scale is simplified. When we look at the topics for school climate, we through the dimensions. We have teaching and learning, school support and relationships, interactions with teacher and school staff, leadership, family involvement, safety and security, student behavior. And then we also have a school or department net promoter score, which is that likely to recommend a school to somebody moving to the area. Our questions are all for the benchmark, for strongly disagree, strongly agree. And then it's typically either true, false for grades three through five. And then we have a smiling face scale that we can use for grades K through two. I will say, we probably have about 27 districts that do the parent, staff, and secondary student versions. This past year, I think we didn't have anybody do K through two, and I think we maybe had two districts do K through five, so they have not included in the benchmarks today. We do typically recommend it to be a spring semester administration. So, usually, right after spring break is that kind of sweet spot. It includes everybody that kind of have a full year on given belt, and be able to really kind of give your perceptions on all of the different aspects of the school quality survey. This document, which I can send to you, just talks about what school climate is, why it's important to measure it. Just overall, school climate has been shown to be one of the greatest factors impacting student achievement and stakeholder satisfaction. So, when you look at the different components that I just kind of talked about with different dimensions, all of those impact each other, and then overall relate to school climate. So, the more positive your school climate is, the greater impact that that has on having higher levels of student achievement and higher stakeholder success. When it comes to the instrument, we have a school partner instrument that we've had over the last 15 years. And every few years or so, we do a reevaluation of it, update it based on the latest research. We just did an extensive school climate review and research this past summer. So, we did update it to best practices, skills, this research, what says kind of the biggest indicators for promoting that positive school climate. So, it is updated in terms of that. And then, I mean, that really comes up, the instrument itself. In terms of looking at what our managed project is, you would be working with at one researcher, who would be your point of contact from start to finish. While we do have that benchmark instrument, it is fully customizable. So, say you'd want to add a subset of questions to one room or all rooms, or even just one school, you could do that. If you feel like something's missing which you want to add, or if there's something that doesn't really fit your district, you can take that off. So, we can put whatever's in best meet your needs or however you need to collect your data. Typically, we like to have about a two-week window for design. We typically recommend the survey to be open for two weeks. And then it's typically a two-week trip around to be able to get your association-ready reports. The reports include one district-level report and then site-level reports. So, each school will be able to have their own reports, their own data. And we can do any type of segmentation or comparison reports. So, any type of demographic data that you supply, and you want to look at students by gender within a specific school, we're able to give you a report based on that, too. You can just talk about that with your researcher, and they can give you an Excel spreadsheet that has that tabled table to compare all of that data. Typically, the surveys include one open-ended response per stakeholder group. And so, the survey contract will include the open-ended analysis of that one question per stakeholder group. So, you'll get a verbatim report of all the open-ended responses, and then you'll also get an open-ended response analysis that kind of highlights the themes that came through from all of those responses.
Jennifer.
We do participation monitoring, so throughout that window, we will send out reminder emails to the different stakeholder groups to increase participation, and we'll also track it. So, if we see that one school or one stakeholder group isn't doing very well, we'll work with our point of contact to see what we can do to increase participation, to be social media posts or text messaging, additional email reminders. It really just depends how we go about sending out surveys to the different stakeholder groups. You do get one survey translation with the survey that is included, but we can also translate additional languages. I would say the platform from this A can translate into up to 40 different languages. So, we can translate into as many languages as you need and feel would be best for your community.
Jennifer, could you, can I ask you a question? Okay, it's right here.
Of course.
The reception, I think you shared with us the amount of participation for parents and for campus, campus staff, students, and K-12, I mean, K-2. You gave us statistics on that when we listened to you before. So, can you share that with the board? What the result was, when we, you know, what your general turnout was? And then, if I remember right, you also told us it takes about 10 minutes to do the survey, depending on the level?
Absolutely. So, typically, what we aim for for parents is about 15% to 20% participation. For staff, we like to see around 15%, and for students, we like to see around 60%.
Okay.
The reason we say that is we do a census data survey. So, that means we don't do any type of random or stratified sampling. We send the survey out to the entire community. And so, with that, you know, you're able to get a larger group to respond. If you were to do like a random sampling of 10% of your population, you'd send it out to 10%, and then you'd be lucky to maybe get half of that. Whereas with ours, we aim for 30% to 20% of your total parent population, 50% of your total staff, and 60% of your total student.
You also said that we could do a survey for our community members as well, as long as we could get the communication, as to whether it's electronic, whether it's phone numbers or emails, but we would have to provide that to you, correct?
That is correct. We can also use community members and have your own community member version, or it can be kind of branched off of one of the others. I will say, community members are typically harder just because they're not, for most of the districts that we do, they're not as invested as, you know, parents and staff or students. But so long as you have like an email list or text messaging list, we can do that. We can also give public URLs that you can share out with different community organizations, and you can post it online. We've had districts send out postcards with URLs, QR codes. So, there's a lot of different ways that we can do that. I mean, we can even do paper surveys. So, really, it's, you know, once we get to meet and unlock everything, we've got a lot of opportunity to be able to work with all of that with you.
I also recall you talking about a QR code or scan to make it easy for folks to do this.
Yes. So, we can do the QR code. It typically works really well with students. You know, they'll come up with their smartphone, and they'll scan it, they'll be able to do the survey. You can send your own flyers to the students, they can scan, and the parents can scan. Because the survey can be taken on desktops, laptops, tablets, smartphones, any of those different type of devices, as well as paper surveys and that and some of the things to do.
Did I hear you right to say that you thought it would be better for us to wait and do the survey after the April timeframe? Did I hear you?
There's no right or wrong answer for that. We will typically recommend that for larger districts who really want to get that kind of full year. But if you do it before spring break, or even in February, and you thought you would do it at school underneath the belts, we just typically recommend the false master.
If you did a paper survey, how is that tabulated? Is that manual?
If you had a paper survey, is that kind of manually?
Sure. So, with paper surveys, we get two different ways. You can create a URL that you can have assigned district staff, let follow the individual survey responses, and they can enter them as they collect them. Or you can collect them all together and mail them to us at the end of the survey window, and we will have people enter them for you. Either way, it works. I will say, if we do paper surveys and you have people mail them to us, it typically adds about a week or two to the recording timeline, just depending upon the quantity of paper surveys.
I had a lot of questions. I'm sorry. So, I'll let you finish what you wanted to share, if there was anything else, and then we'll open it up to the board for more questions.
No, that was really all I had to share. So, any questions that you have, I mean, I have a parent version of the survey, I have an example report, and so it's really, you tell me what you would like to know, and I've got what I can share with you.
Did anybody have any trouble downloading any of that information? Because if not, if you did, I'll be happy, and we'll make sure you get the same documents that she shared online here. Anybody need to get copies of that, we'll make sure you get it. Let's Cory send it out in the update. Let me know.
Yeah, I'll look for it. Is there a percentage response for online and paper surveys in terms of... In terms of, do you have a higher response from?
Yeah, yeah, so we definitely see the majority of our responses come from online. I would say out of the seventy-plus districts that we work with, maybe still do paper surveys. It's going to vary with your district and kind of how your, your parent population works. And the districts that we have that do paper surveys are typically very large districts that have larger pockets of, um, larger pockets of families that don't have access to smartphones or the internet. So they'll do papers.
Yeah, I just want to make you clear, I'm not interested in which districts, is there a higher percentage of districts that choose to do online? I'm interested in the percentage of respondents. Like you said, fifty percent of teachers or sixty percent of parents do the survey. Is there, is there a difference between the percentage you gather from paper and online of the people taking the survey?
I'm still not sure I understand the question.
So if you, if you did a, let's say you did in a large city, in a Chicago or a Rochester area district, and you did a paper survey, are you saying that you'd get fifty percent, typically fifty percent respondents? And then if you did it in a smaller district, rural district, you'd get fifty percent if you did it online? Or is there, is there, is it advantageous to do a paper or an online survey because you would get more responses per capita?
We have found it's more advantageous to do the online survey because you get way more responses with online than with paper.
Alright, thank you.
Now Mike brought up the cost, and I did some research since I was, you know, I told the board back in the, in the fall that I was going to look into various survey companies. And because K-12 Insights is connected to Let's Talk, and it's already a service that we have already purchased through BOSI's, this is a much more reasonable opportunity for us as a district to consider versus doing an outside agency to do a survey. The costs were anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. To have someone on the outside do this type of survey for us, I just wanted to share that data with the board, okay? So, um, if we were to do a rollout, Jennifer, could you talk to us about how we would make that happen on our end with you or with your company?
If you were to do a rollout, you mean like have the process be from start to finish?
Yeah, well, it'd be the process. Because I know we have to sit down, our, our administrative team, our board, we have to sit down and talk about, because it's going to be a customized survey. What are the types of questions that our board would like to see answered for our, our district staff and students and our community members? We want, we want feedback, honest feedback. So we want to make sure we're asking the right questions of our community so that we can improve as a district and do the best we can for our staff and our kids.
Of course. So what I would say the best process for your district would be at this point, would be, we would go ahead and send you the benchmark survey that you could start reviewing, so that you would go out, you would know what our benchmarks are once you have that first planning call with your researcher. So you would then have the planning call with your researcher where you can kind of talk through the benchmark survey, what you see that's great about, what might be missing, so that during that call, she'll be able to get a better understanding of if there are some custom questions that she would need to collect, either across all of the versions or for just one stakeholder group. And so what will happen after that planning call, where you guys will talk about different questions, you'll talk about the timeline, and you'll talk about, kind of discuss out all of the different logistics. You will then transition to kind of an email back to the board. So after that call, your researcher will then send you the project plan, the outline, everything that you talked about on the planning call. And then she will take notes that you guys discussed, the design, the survey design, and whether going with the instrument itself, what we changed and added. And then they'll become a, a spreadsheet draft based on it. And so she'll send you additional questions of, okay, we wanted to add some questions on social emotional work. So based on what we discussed, here are some additional questions that we could add. And from there, you can either do, we have districts that'll use the Word docs or Google docs to kind of have that conversation back and forth with comments, track edits. And then you can have as many phone calls throughout that process as you need. Whether you want to just keep doing things through Google Docs or email, you want to hop on another call to kind of discuss out different design as you go through the process. But you will have that dedicated researcher Google and walk through that whole process.
So, so my understanding from when we, we had the meeting with, with Mr. Civic as well as myself via Zoom, two weeks of design, open, open for two weeks to do, two weeks, two to three weeks to do the report for the district site level, and it's an open-ended analysis, is that correct?
That is correct. That is essentially kind of our typical. However, we need longer for the design process, that's okay. If you want to keep your survey open longer than two weeks, that, we also have plenty of districts that do that as well. So those two kind of keep, for the work. The only thing that's kind of really semantic is, you know, regardless of how long you leave it open, it's typically two to three weeks for us for recording.
One of the other things that, one of the other things that came up, Jennifer, discussion as I was doing the, the background, was also a potential budget exit survey. I don't want the two of them to be at the same time. At least that would not make too much sense to me. But does the, does K-12 Insights also do budget exit surveys that can be handed out, you know, as people are voting? Is that something?
Absolutely, we can work with you on that. We do customized survey. So that would be something that we, you know, we would then have that kind of planning call with you about what it is that you were looking for. And then we would research that topic, design a survey for you, and then it would be that similar process of kind of, okay, this is what our first draft is. How do you feel it fits? We just collect, you know, all of the data point needs based on our conversation. And then it would be that thing.
Anybody have any other questions?
Who does the researcher work with at the district for the questions and what's on and off the survey?
So that is typically the district's decision. We have worked with, it depends, we've worked with superintendents directly, we've worked with communications, we've worked with research people. And it's really going to be whoever the district has as their point of contact, and that'll be who we work with. That's not a decision we made.
That's a discussion we as a board can have as to where we would like to begin in that process, okay? Alright. Any other questions? We have our student representative tonight. Jennifer, thank you very much. We will be in touch.
Of course, as I know that, while we're going to analyze with any questions kind of come up, feel free to shoot anything else you can help us out to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays everyone.
You too.
Alright, so I want to recognize our student representative, Brooklyn Grenier, who's here tonight. Both of our student reps are kind of working back and forth. They are very busy, busy people who do a lot of different activities. And we're just glad that she could be here tonight with us. And she's got a quick little update of some things that are going on in the building.
Some things that are going on this week, student council has finalized a winter, winter-spring dance on February fifteenth. This week is spirit week for the holidays as well, and we have a bunch of clubs participating and kind of spreading light during it. NHS, for example, is collecting items for Riverview Manor. All this week, and then those will be shipped out Thursday. Sad Club is selling anti-drug and alcohol T-shirts. Mr. Kearney, the engineering teacher, helped make those with the students. Interact is working on letting students make ornaments for the week and decorating hallways with those. Last week as well, Interact sent out holiday cards to Riverview Manor. And then the last day of school this week, the band and chorus will be performing all day. And that's all the events.
Thank you, welcome. Glad to have you. Unfinished business discussion.
Oh, it's just a flop of an individual for them internally.
Okay. So with regards to unfinished.
Sure.
So, alright, the book committee met, or I should say our instructional review committee met on the book Gender Queer, and the recommendation was given to the superintendent of schools. And the superintendent of schools has addressed that issue with the individual who filed the complaint, and the letter was sent in the mail this week, so we're just waiting for a response one way from her. That's where we go from here with regards to that. So that was one of our unfinished business items, okay? Any other comments from the board? Any other discussion items from the board?
I'm unclear at this point about the, the survey that we just talked about. Is that then decided that that's who we're using?
I don't think, not necessarily, I think that this was one of the options right for that.
This is, this could be, we can continue the discussion now, or we can bring it at the next meeting and talk more about it after we give you some more details about the cost, how we're going to discuss, you know, how we're going to customize the questions, who's going to start that process. Because I know there's some, there's some specific questions, I think, we as a board want to make sure are addressing that survey. So I think that's where we should start, what do you think? What do you think?
My only thought is, again, I don't, I wouldn't mind if proving something that's more expensive, if it was certainly better and more experienced and got a more accurate response. Not saying that it can't be accurate. So I don't know what their history is, and I always, I just want to make clear that there's more kind of investigation on what the options are. Well, to get the results, because we don't want to do this.
This were recommended, they gave, they gave us all different types of examples, and they spend, this company was one of them. The only reason this is going to be more reasonable for the district is because we already have a service with them through Let's, Let's Talk. So you could explain that better with BOSI's. So we have, we already have a service with the company, so this would just be an additional service that we would ask them to do. And you would understand that as well.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
But they are as reputable as a company as the other ones, it's just because they're already involved with the district. It's going to be more reasonable for us as, as, as for our taxpayers, for us as a district. So to go outside, they're going to do the same thing. Only, like I said, when I found that out, I said, well, the board's going to probably appreciate that as well as our taxpayers, that it's reasonable, and they're going to do the same thing for us. They are a third-party evaluation group. So they're not the district creating the survey, they are creating the survey for the district. Okay?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Good.
Okay.
So just real quick, ninety-one, just to touch on this, this is just an internal thing, CDO, they've swapped treasures for us at the school district, so that's all that ninety-one is.
So we're going to need a motion, correct?
Sure.
Alright, so I need a motion for ninety-one, that Terry Ann Moore will be appointed district treasurer of the legal Appleworth Central School District for the remainder of the school year. And that Kelly Teslar, Tesar, excuse me, will be appointed deputy district treasurer of the legal Appleworth Central School District effective December eighteenth. So moved. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Jess. Go call.
Linda?
Yeah.
Mike Phelps?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Mike Paul.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you.
So the motion carries. And now we move on to our period of public comment. And I have a couple people that would like to talk. So I'm going to start with you, Joan. Would you like to get up and speak? Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay, I'm Joan Davis, thirty-three King Pete Circle, pretty well-known here. I'm going to change my topic of what I want to talk about, so, sorry about that. I really applaud the librarian committee for their recommendation that there be a librarian in the two buildings. I think there's really a misconception that the librarian is just somebody who stamps books, and that's really not the case. And I can really, really advocate for having a library in each building in addition to classroom libraries from two, two vantage points. The first is that, and I'm not bragging, but I would be one of the children who would never be serviced by a classroom library. There is no way you could have the range of what I was interested in and could read on any particular grade level. In grade four, I had a permanent pass to walk to the public library, so I could take out books, and I was taking like four books out at a time and reading a couple of them per night. So, you know, it just would not have happened in a classroom library, as good as a classroom library would be. My second point is that for many, many years, my duty as an English teacher at OFA was to be, was to substitute for the librarian while the librarian was at lunch. And I can't tell you how often it was really an important part of the job to talk to a student who would be wandering the stacks, wanting something to read, and had no idea how to pick anything out that would satisfy what that child wanted. I shouldn't be calling them children, they would have been sixteen, seventeen years old, but even so, they had no idea where to go. And it was my job to know the collection, talk to the student, and get some idea of what might meet the student's needs. And what's been very rewarding is that I've had students who have come back to me and said, oh, you had me read such and such, and I don't even remember doing this. And that turned me on to being a reader for the rest of my life. And I went on to read many things by that author, or things like it, or whatever. So I think that when they're talking about getting the right person there, that is really, really important. And knowing the whole collection is really important. And I was just glad that some people remember what I don't remember, so, thank you.
Thanks, Joan. And next on the list, I think of, forgive me if I mess up the last name. I think it's Courtney, but I'm going to go with her.
Yes.
Oh, there we go, Courtney.
Hello, so I was at the last meeting and spoke about how a group of eleven-year-olds went missing for several hours. And I asked for a follow-up and fixed for that. I did receive a call from the principal the next day saying it's fixed, it's all working great, everything's perfect now. And I am going to ask the board to ask the superintendent to perform an audit on the attendance system. So you can prove or show that you actually can find if a student is missing from one class to another. from one class to another, because I trusted before, and you guys knew where the kids were. And, uh, that was certainly not the case. So, and you know, I asked initially, uh, when the problem occurred, I was told it's, it's a hot mess, right? That they, they can't control it, they, they don't know. Um, they probably have to hire more people. And none of that seems to have occurred, but yet the problem is fixed. The same night I spoke, surprising, a little surprising. But, um, so yes, I would like to ask the board to audit it.
Well, we'll get the right people to address that topic, okay? So thank you. And now, finally, so I don't forget, there are administrators sitting in the audience. They need to tell us a little bit about what's going on in the building. I don't want to leave you out. Mr. Francisco?
Yeah, now, just like the high school, we have spirit week this week. Um, chorus and band will be performing throughout the day on Thursday. Uh, we're also gonna make some popcorn for the kids, uh, as we wrap it up uh, for the holiday season. Um, we are doing a door decorating contest in the middle school, and, uh, we'll be going around Thursday morning just to look at the doors. And, uh, win indoors by grade level. I think student council agreed to pizza party or ice cream, uh, for that, uh, win indoor or indoors.
Uh, and please, Delphel, if you can, because she's not here tonight, please let the music department know their concerts, and they were just totally amazing. And I didn't make all of them, but I made some of them, and they were just beautiful. What a tremendous performance. Our kids are awesome, so thank you for that. I know they worked very hard with that. And of course, I know they're working very hard right now with sports too, because they're, they're doing very well, so anyway. So with that being said, um, I, I think we're, we're done. Uh, uh, any, uh, agenda items for the next meeting? Any topics, uh, that the board has cooking that they'd like, you know, make a note of? And we'll, yeah, not yet, okay, all right.
Maybe if there was a follow-up, you know, put on the agenda.
With regards to the audit? Yeah. And then actually, um, Courtney, I'll, um, he'll tag the person that's gonna do that for you.
Okay, thank you.
And then hopefully that would be, could be district-wide. So thank you all for coming, have a wonderful holiday, Merry Christmas everybody, and enjoy your holiday. Oh, I need a motion, but during the meeting, so moved. Second. I think you could say, all in favor? Aye.